Good evening, this is Enid Lapellis. Today is June 22nd, 2020, and the time for the meeting is 8:00 PM. This is a regular meeting of the Monroe Town Council. As is customary before the start of our meetings, would you all please join me in reciting the Pledge of Allegiance? I pledge allegiance to the Constitution of the United States of America, one nation, under God, with liberty and justice for all. Please allow me to confirm the presence of those Town Council members and any other staff or anticipated participants are present and are able to hear me. So, members, when I call your names, please respond in the affirmative. DeeDee Martin? Here. Jennifer Aguilar?
Jennifer Aguilar, here.
Jason Mauer?
Jason Mauer, here.
Terry Rooney?
Terry Rooney, here.
Jonathan Formicella?
Jonathan Formicella, here.
Tony Scott?
Tony Scott, here.
Don O'Rourke?
Don O'Rourke, here.
Kevin Reed?
Kevin Reed, here.
And Enid Lapellis, here. Staff and other anticipated participants, when I call your names, please respond in the affirmative. First Electman Ken Kellogg?
First Electman Kellogg, here.
Town Attorney Frank Leado? He's not, I'm sure he'll come when he gets there, so don't interrupt. Public Works Director Chris Nowacki? Chris Nowacki? Just say that's here.
Maybe, he may be muted.
I am here, can you hear me?
Yes, thank you. Park and Recreation Director, Mr. Oroz?
Mr. Oroz, here.
Inferior Human Resources Director, Mike Brown?
Mike Brown is here.
WMNR Manager Kurt Anderson? He's not here. Police Chief John Salvatore? Police Chief John Salvatore, are you there? Alright, so we have Frank Leado hasn't signed in yet, or John Salvatore. I hereby declare a quorum and call this meeting to order. A copy of the agenda and any related materials have been posted too and can be found on the Town of Monroe's website, www-monroecc.org for public inspection. I hereby appoint Town Attorney Frank Leado to serve as moderator of the meeting to ensure we apply to both state laws and the Governor's Executive Order governing remote electronic meetings. And so I will take over the moderator job until Frank signs in. At this time, Enid Lapellis will be the moderator to introduce the rules of the remote electronic meeting. This public meeting is being conducted remotely in compliance with Section 1 of Governor Lamont's Executive Order Number 7B, dated in Monroe, March 14th, 2020, using go-to-meeting electronic conferencing technology. Using this technology, the public shall participate in real-time in this meeting via computer tablet, smartphone, or telephone using the access information set forth on the meeting agenda. Please be advised that each meeting has unique participation information, so be sure that you have accessed the correct meeting. Notice is hereby given that only 250 participants may access this remote electronic public meeting at any one time. Access to this meeting using this technology is granted solely by the technology provider on first-access basis and is not controlled by the Town of Monroe. While it is anticipated that we will not exceed participant limit for this meeting, should appear that we are approaching said limit so that any member of the public has denied access to this meeting, the Chairman retains the right to adjourn and continue the meeting at later dates using technology appropriate to ensure all members of the public may participate. Please notice, take notice the following regarding this remote electronic public meeting: One, that this meeting is being conducted in real-time. Two, that this meeting is open to the public. Three, that any member of the public may listen or view this meeting anonymously. Four, that this meeting is being recorded. And while we ask that you mute your microphones unless recognized to speak, that anything you say, do, or display on your screen may become part of this recording. That the recording shall be posted to the Town's website within seven days. That the recording shall be made available to the public within a reasonable time. As set forth on the agenda, this meeting will feature and permit public participation. Only written comments publicly got, which you otherwise be germane to public participation and received being the date the agenda was posted through one hour before the start of the meeting will be written to the record during the participation portion of this meeting. Before I turn the floor back to the Chair, please permit me to cover some ground rules to ensure the meeting runs smoothly, the comments are audible, and an accurate record is maintained. This meeting shall follow standard parliamentary procedure. However, I ask all participants to follow these special rules in addition. Please mute the microphone so as to reduce background noise. Prior to speaking on each occasion, you must clearly state your name for record. The use of chat speeches is prohibited, will not be considered during the meeting at any time. With regard to matter of business on the agenda, the Chair will introduce each matter on the agenda. If subject to motion or resolution, the Chair will ask for same and a second. After doing so, the Chair will invite each member by name for comment. After all members have had an opportunity to speak for the first time, the Chair will repeat the invite to each member in the same order until there is no further comment. Please hold your comments until you are recognized, everyone will have an equal opportunity to speak. Once discussion is complete or a vote has been completed by parliamentary procedure, the Chair will call for a roll call vote on the motion. The Chair will state each member by name and ask for your vote. The Chair will tally the vote, announce the vote, whether the motion passed or failed. Again, please remember to mute your phone or computer when you are not speaking. And lastly, please remember to speak clearly and in a way that helps generate accurate minutes. And now, let's start with the agenda. I'm back as our Chair. Before we continue, I understand that Councilman Kevin Reed wishes to make a motion regarding suspension of the rules or procedure. Mr. Reed?
Yes, thank you, Madam Chair. I move that pursuant to Article 7 of our Rules of Procedure, the Town Council suspend Rule 13, which requires all matters relating to the general government of the town and all agreements to which the town is a party, be referred to LNA. The reason for this motion is that, due to coronavirus, our subcommittees, including LNA, have not meant to consider the matters which appear on this evening's agenda, which otherwise would have been referred to and voted on by LNA as a conditioned precedent to appearing before the full body.
Do I hear a second for this motion?
Jason Mauer, second.
Jason Mauer, discussion, discussion. Hearing none, so let's do a roll call vote. And you're answering by, the statement is, I call for a roll call vote on the motion to disprove rule. DeeDee Martin?
DeeDee Martin, yes.
Jen Aguilar?
Jen Aguilar, aye.
Jason Mauer?
Jason Mauer, aye.
Terry Rooney?
Terry Rooney, aye.
Don Formicella?
Jonathan Formicella, aye.
Tony Scott?
Tony Scott, aye.
Don O'Rourke?
Don O'Rourke, yea.
Kevin Reed?
Kevin Reed, aye.
Enid Lapellis, yes. So this motion passes 9-0. Are there any objections to me passing the consent count as presented? Hearing none, I'm passing the present calendar as presented. I hereby ask, now we're going to communications. I hereby ask that communications, Item A through O, be referenced in the minutes of the meeting. Call of participation, so, Mr. Kellogg, if you could help me, because I can't see. At this time, I will ask the Moderator and Town Attorney Frank Leado to identify if there are any individuals who wish to participate in public participation. Mr. Kellogg, can you see anybody, anybody saying they would like to publicly participate?
Madam Chair, if you'd like me to organize that, I'd be happy to for you. So, all lines are unmuted at this time. If there are any members of the public who wish to participate, I would ask that you slowly and clearly state your name one at a time, and I will make a list for the Chair to call upon you. Also remind you to abide by the public participation guidelines that are set forth on the agenda. So with that, is there anyone who'd like to be recognized wishing to speak during public participation?
Mr. Selectman, just as a note, if you have muted yourself on your phone, even though you're unmuted within the program, you need to make sure you unmute there if you do wish to participate.
Thank you, I assume it's Mr. Mauer.
That was, that is correct, so thank you for that reminder, Mr. Mauer. Again, second call, anyone wishing to participate publicly? I'll make one last final call, anyone wishing to speak during public participation? Madam Chair, no one has identified themselves as wishing to speak at this time.
Okay, thank you. Okay, action items, this time I have two action items to present to the council. So, number one, Town Council Committee on Finance, Education, and Public Safety Matters. I believe Mr. Rooney wanted to speak on that. So, Mr. Rooney, are you there?
Thank you, Madam Chair. No, you know, I'm not the Chair of SAPPs, I don't know if they've actually appointed a Chair of SAPPs today. You know, in regards to public safety, we do have a matter on the agenda and required...
It happens to be me, by all means, please, please, relax.
Okay, thank you, Madam Chair. Just on the agenda, we do have coming forward the chief contract that was vetted through the Police Commission, all parties involved, it seems to be a good solid contract. I know we will talk about it further, but there's a lot of activity in the Police Department, that's the only issue that's a concern to the Town Council at this time, thank you.
Okay. Anybody comment about that? Or, actually, it's further down on the calendar. The Town Council Committee on Planning and Zoning, Public Works, and Park and Recreation Matters. Mr. Rooney?
Thank you, Madam Chair. You know, due to COVID, we haven't had a meeting, but I have set up a meeting for next week. I will contact Mr. Reed and I believe DeeDee Martin, we're just waiting for an exact time and date. There are many things going on in P and D right now, so I think it's of the essence to have a meeting. So, just to keep everybody informed of that, that will be happening next week at some point, and I will contact everybody once I have further information. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Okay, so I believe I had no correspondence for Item C, D, E, F on the action items, so I'm going to G. The First Electman's update, Mr. Kellogg?
One more thing, I'm sorry, Madam Chair, Councilman Rooney for the EMS Building Committee?
Okay.
Madam Chair?
Mr. Rooney?
Yeah, the EMS Building Committee, we do have a special meeting tomorrow to approve bills that have been adding up through COVID. So we will have a call-in meeting tomorrow afternoon to accomplish that, and then we will move forward to our regular meeting, and hopefully shortly, get back in the regular, you know, way things are supposed to go. So that's all I have there, thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Onto the Selectman's update, Mr. Kellogg?
Thank you, Madam Chair. So, I guess I will use the bulk of my time to talk about COVID updates. I think I did not see the report that came out this evening from the state yet, but as of yesterday, we're still bringing in 109 cases. You know, testing is ongoing, but seems to be an ongoing source of difficulty for people to understand how that occurs. So I have, we have posted on the Town's website the state data news regarding testing, and it also includes an interactive map to find out where testing can be done, and who, you know, who is eligible for testing, and how you can go about that if you are so inclined, and certainly if you are systematic anyway. So, that's that. I did update, I know everyone, last week via, you know, via email, but I'll just eat that, a couple of the items. We, as you know, the Phase 2 opening occurred with some indoor dining, nail salons, tanning, etc., and it seems to have gone very well. We've gotten good feedback out there. The gathering limit for indoor has been increased to 25 and outdoor to 100. We have been told to anticipate that it will stay that way until sometime in mid-July, with an exact date not yet provided, which will then increase to 50 indoors and 50 outdoors, with a further opening at that point allowing an unlimited number of individuals, well, I shouldn't say unlimited, not limited by number, simply limited by space, outdoor gatherings where people or individual family or households gather 15-foot separation, what they call blanket to blanket, with no cap. So, that is the update on those gatherings. As far as Town Services and Facilities, we've updated the website that shows the status of services. Town Hall, we are now having staff return to the office to kind of get back into the mode of working in the office, and that is in preparation to provide more in-person services in the near future. So we are starting to do that. We are finally finalizing some signage, partitions, and things like that. You'd be surprised how hard it is to get plexiglass these days. Most of what, most of what we ordered has finally arrived. There are a couple of things that we're waiting on, but most of what we ordered has arrived and has been installed. So the next phase for Town Hall, which will be in the near future, will be continuing to encourage remote servicing by phone and web and online where possible, but we will be allowing for appointments and allowing the public in by appointment only when we do that. After that, we will obviously sometime, probably in July, assuming that things are continuing to proceed in the direction that they are, consistent with the next phase of reopening, we will probably, you know, my goal is to allow for, you know, basically full public access. There'll be all the usual precautions and restrictions regarding spacing and distancing and signage, etc. So, the next phase will be opening for appointments, and I'll be announcing that in the near future once we see how we are this week with all the facility, things that were being finalized right now, and how we are, how we feel up to the end of the week. As far as Parks and Rec, I know we're going to talk later on the agenda about the pool and the lake, not the lake, but the pool specifically, but really eager to be able to provide that service for the community, and we will be able to do that. So we'll talk more about the pool a little bit later on as relates to fees. Campsites are now fully open. We had opened them up at 50% capacity, meaning one-half of the campsites were originally open. The guidelines changed, and we have significant enough space between campsites that we are now allowed to fully open, so all sites at Web Mountain are now open for camping. The Summer Concert Series, well, obviously it did not start when it would have normally started. Our goal, and I know Missy's still on the call here, is we are looking to hopefully provide a limited concert series in August. That's presuming the guidelines don't change. We have been working, or I should say, Missy has been working with the various bands to try and maintain some contact and availability and scheduling. And so, assuming that that is something we can still pursue, we'll be working on those contracts that were kind of put on hold early because we weren't sure if we'd be able to do them at all. So at this point, we're going to, we're going to go down that road. And we will be starting to open up other areas of the park that were closed, like the picnic areas and things like that, in the near future. The Cedar Center is going to remain closed for the, for the near term, but we have pretty strict guidance in regards to not wanting to encourage gatherings of the more older population. That said, we're working with the director there to see, you know, what types of things we can possibly expand to that will still minimize risk. They are continuing to provide all the services they normally would, but certainly we would love to be able to kind of open things up a little bit, but we're not, we're not just there yet. We are working closely, so, you know, looking at what other, what other communities are doing as well. But right now, the state guidance is really encouraging us not to do that. Library to Go is up and running, and we're working on a plan to start limited public access at some point next month, but again, assuming everything goes well, we can move forward on that. So, that is the, that's kind of the COVID update. I also just wanted to let the council know that the union negotiations as relates to next fiscal year are, remain ongoing. Obviously, there's nothing on your agenda tonight to consider. However, I certainly anticipate that we will have tentative agreements for you to consider in the near future. I am going to unfortunately have to ask the Chair entertain calling a special meeting at a point when we get there. So I just want to give you a heads up now that I will be asking the Chair for that in that it's appropriate to do so. And that is my update for this evening. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you. There is no unfinished discussion. I was going on to Item...
Madam Chair? Madam Chair, Jen Aguilar, may I ask a question?
Sure.
Mr. Kellogg, thank you for your update. Is the, when you said union meetings, are you referring to the police union? Or what union were you referring to?
Union, union negotiations are on...
Negotiations, sorry.
Union negotiations are continuing with the Highway Union, the Supervise Union, and the Police Union.
Okay, thank you very much.
You're very welcome.
And Madam Chair, if I may also ask one question? Jason Mauer? Thank you very much. Selectman Kellogg, just for the future updates, I was wondering if we can, with this new position that has been created, if just as a regular part of the updates, if we can kind of just get an update as to what that position is doing, and the effects of that, and what we're seeing, just for informational purposes, as it's something that all of us are unfamiliar with, and we may need to use for evaluation down the line, if we can kind of get a regular update on it. I think that would be helpful.
So you're talking about Bill Hoads work, right?
Correct.
In case somebody didn't know, okay. Anything else, Mr. Mauer?
That's all for right now, thank you.
Okay. So going on to Item 8, on the new business, Resolution 20-57. To consider and act upon a resolution regarding the First Amendment to Agreements with Residential Waste Systems, RWS. I'll ask Mr. O'Rourke to please introduce the motion. Mr. O'Rourke?
Don O'Rourke. Resolution Number 20-57, resolve that Kenneth and Kellogg, First Electmen of the Town of Monroe, is authorized to execute and deliver on behalf of the Town of Monroe the First Amendment to Agreement and any associated documents by and between Residential Waste Systems for recycling, collection, and disposal, and other ancillary services.
Do I have a second to this motion? Do I hear a second?
Jason Mauer, second.
Thank you. Okay, all in say, do we have to do a vote on this, do you think? We have to do a vote on this, correct?
You also have to go down the line and ask for comments.
Well, first, let's start the discussion, and then I'll, let's start with Mr. Kellogg on the discussion, and then we can have each of the members discuss it. All right, that's okay with you, Mr. Formicella or Mr. Kellogg, it's fine? So I have a second to the motion, Jason Mauer. So let's start with Mr. Kellogg's discussion of the resolution.
Thank you, Madam Chair. So, as the council is aware from my, from my memo that's in your packet, some of you were on council back in 2014, and may remember this, but for those who weren't, in back in 2014, there was agreement entered into with Residential Waste Systems, RWS, that does the collection and disposal of the recyclable waste and some other services for the town. That agreement runs through early part of 2021, but also with that agreement allows for the extension of the agreement by the town upon written notice to RWS. I've had some conversations with our Public Works Director, Chris Nowacki, who is present and can speak further on this if you'd like, that we have had a favorable experience with RWS and their services. I can certainly state personally that I know when resident concerns have come up, they've been handled by RWS in a very efficient and appropriate fashion. Their agreement, which does allow for such extension, however, did not come with a fee structure. So I have worked with the principal of RWS to negotiate such terms and asked that the Town Attorney draft an amendment. The terms, I'm pleased to say that we agreed upon, actually are reduction in the increase of fees that were contractually in the first, the first seven years, which I kind of outlined in my memo. So we're going from a 3% increase per year to an increase that would vary from fiscal year, none of which is greater than 2%. Most years are 1.5%, and there are a few years at 0%. Based on our research, we think it's a very favorable agreement relative to the cost being charged versus the market. At least that's what Mr. Nowacki has told me, and that we're certainly recommending that we move forward. I, again, asked Frank to draft the First Amendment. His opinion is attached as well, and we would like to have this moved up. And I see that, Enid, I don't know, I don't think you have video in it, so I'll let you know that Town Attorney Frank Leado has also joined us at this time. So, with that, I don't know if Mr. Nowacki has anything he'd like to add to that or just wants to be available for questions, but with your permission, Madam Chair, I'll just ask Mr. Nowacki if you'd like to add to that.
Sure, of course, thank you.
Hello, Chris Nowacki. Go on, Enid.
Go ahead.
I agree with Mr. Kellogg, it is definitely a favorable rate over the term. And also to comment that we have not had any significant issues with RWS. They've been more than beneficial to us as a community and have definitely addressed any issues throughout the existing term of their contract. So I'm glad to see we can continue working with them.
Thank you.
Questions?
We'll do the questions when we do the discussion. That I'll pay with whoever the person is to ask. So if I said DeeDee Martin, any comments for discussion?
DeeDee Martin, no comment.
Jennifer Aguilar?
Jennifer Aguilar, no comments.
Jason Mauer?
Jason Mauer, I did review the original contract. This amendment seems like a very favorable one for us, considering the past increases that we've had for the other years. While there is an argument to be made that, since it was silent on this, that we could try to say that we extended, and it extends at a 0% throughout the term, I don't think that's within the spirit of the agreement, based off of how, what the original schedule and language was. And considering not only the favorable rates compared to past years, but also looking at surrounding areas, what the rates are there, I think this is a very fair contract, and we'll be supporting it.
Okay, Terry Rooney?
Terry Rooney, no comment.
Jonathan Formicella?
Jonathan Formicella, no comment or questions.
Tony Scott?
Tony Scott, no comment.
Don O'Rourke?
Don O'Rourke, no further comment.
Kevin Reed?
Kevin Reed, no comment.
And Enid Lapellis, no comment. So, is there any further discussion, let's go down the list again. Mrs. Martin, any further discussion?
DeeDee Martin, no further discussion.
Jennifer Aguilar?
Jennifer Aguilar, no further discussion.
Jason Mauer?
Jason Mauer, no further discussion.
Terry Rooney?
Terry Rooney, no further discussion.
Jonathan Formicella?
Jonathan Formicella, no further discussion.
Tony Scott?
Tony Scott, no further discussion.
Don O'Rourke?
Don O'Rourke, no further discussion.
Kevin Reed?
Kevin Reed, no further discussion.
And Enid Lapellis, no further discussion. So we'll now do a roll call vote on the resolution. DeeDee Martin?
DeeDee Martin, aye.
Jennifer Aguilar?
Jennifer Aguilar, aye.
Jason Mauer?
Jason Mauer, aye.
Terry Rooney?
Terry Rooney, aye.
Jonathan Formicella?
Jonathan Formicella, aye.
Tony Scott?
Tony Scott, aye.
John O'Rourke?
John O'Rourke, aye.
Kevin Reed?
Kevin Reed, aye.
And Enid Lappelis, aye. So this motion passes by a vote of nine to zero. Going on to item B, resolution 20-58. To consider an act upon a resolution regarding Parks and Recreation Wolf Park Pool Fee Schedule for the 2020 motion. I'll ask Mr. O'Rourke to please introduce the motion.
Resolution number 20-58, resolved that the Wolf Park Pool Fee Schedule for the 2020 season as presented by the Parks and Rec, the Recreation Department, and approved by the Parks and Recreation Commission, is hereby approved by the town council.
Do I hear a second for this motion?
Second, Terry Rooney.
Okay, so I heard Terry Rooney first. Okay. Mr. Kellogg, start the discussion, please.
Thank you, Madam Chair. So as, as everyone's aware, as I'm. It was my very strong desire to be able to open the Wolf Park Pool for what's left of the 2020 season, something that earlier on, we were not aware if we would be able to do so based on the governor's orders, or if it was even being practical, or if we would have a logistical way to do that. Very pleased to say that Missy has risen to the challenge that I presented before her, to find a way to make this work, and where the team has really come together. I want to thank Mike Brown, who's on the call as well, who's also helping out with some of these logistical issues as well. And so, as was presented to the Parks and Rec Commission last week, what we've come up with is a model that will comply with the state's standards, which involve capacity limitations, social distancing, cleaning requirements, and a strong recommendation that we utilize a reservation system, which is actually a direction we were heading anyway, but the state is now actually recommending that as well. So as such, the concept of selling traditional seasonal classes, we didn't see practical or fair because one would potentially buy a, you know, a very high-priced, relatively higher-priced seasonal pool pass and not necessarily be guaranteed access to the pool throughout the season because it would be on this reservation system. So we are recommending switching to a per-session model this season. These are per-three-hour slots that I know Missy kind of outlined in a memo that I also included from her to me. You have that in your packet. It would be done, obviously, in conjunction with all the other requirements we have. So we're using the normal daily rate as a guideline to come up with a reasonable rate for a three-hour slot that is reasonable, practical, and somewhat nominal. For three-hour slots. So as it is before you, the price per session would be an adult, five dollars. Children, three to seventeen, four dollars, and seniors over sixty would be three dollars. Children under two are. So that is the very brief fee schedule that is before you that we're asking the council approve this evening. And Missy is, of course, on the, on the call. If she wants to add anything now or be available for questions, I'd certainly better do so, with your permission, Madam Chair.
Okay, so Missy, do you have anything to add?
Good evening, everyone. No, I just again want to thank Ken and Mike for helping me get this all going, and it's really exciting that we'll be able to get this pool hopefully open and let the Monroe community enjoy it. So it's going to be challenging, but I think it's going to be well worthwhile for everybody.
Well, thank you. So let's do the questions with the discussion, since Missy can hear and answer questions. So DeeDee Martin, any kind of question or discussion on this topic?
I have no questions. I commend Missy for making this happen, certainly under a difficult situation. So I'm happy to see this.
Thank you. Jennifer Aguilar, questions, discussion?
Jennifer Aguilar, I, I second what Ms. Martin said. Thank you so much, Missy, for making this happen. But I do have one question. Is this going to be open to non-residents as well?
So at this time, a non-resident is welcome to also purchase, but the current parking restrictions are still in place. So when Ken chooses to change that, they'll be allowed to park, but they could come in and purchase the online reservation, and they could come in with a Monroe friend.
I'm sorry, I missed that.
They could be dropped off to come to the pool, but as of right now, anyone can purchase a reservation. There's just still the parking restriction. That's okay.
Madam Chair, may I ask?
Did I, did I answer? Did everyone hear me?
Yes, thank you, Missy.
Yeah, I think.
Madam Chair, may I ask one more question? Mr. Kellogg, do you, do you anticipate keeping that parking the way it is now for that the two lots will be for residents only throughout the summer?
So based upon the, the status of the pandemic, assuming that there is no dramatic change, my intention is to maintain the parking restrictions to limit the overall attendance to the park, to maintain the ability to socially distance throughout the park. So that is certainly my, my intent. But obviously, I can be, you know, things could be superseded by government orders, by the governor, or some other matter. But at this point, the state's emergency declaration is, goes through early September. So I anticipate that a local directive would, we would be able to keep that in place through the season.
Okay, thank you. May I ask one more question, Madam Chair?
Of course.
I guess this would be for either one of you. What are the financial implications of, of losing the memberships?
So I, you asked Missy to work with our finance department to, I think Mike helped in this as well, because there's a lot of moving parts in terms of the staff. And the long and the short of it is, you know, I mean, the, the answer really is, it depends. It depends upon weather and how much the pool can be opened. It depends upon the demand. If we continue at the seventy-person limit per session, and we fill up every single session, we'll be just fine. We'd actually probably be revenue positive. But if we have a bad season, you know, we could, we could lose funds as well. We could, it could be at a net loss. And there's a, I think there's a model where we pretty much break even as well. I think that was assuming at half-capacity and things like that. That said, one of the things to ponder is that in this year's budget preparation, the expenditure budget as relates to the Parks and Rec operational fees for the pool were not reduced. So we still have a budget to fully operate the pool, normal operating costs. However, the part, the Board of Finance did lower the revenue assumption in the budget for Parks and Rec overall by more than fifty percent. So we actually have a anticipated, in other words, if we do have a shortfall in this one unusual season, it is contemplated in this budget, if that makes sense.
It does. Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Okay. Jason Mauer?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I do have a couple of quick questions, although some of them were already answered through Councilwoman Aguilar's questions. I want to, one, just confirm that I'm assuming part of the rationale of allowing non-residents to buy is the fact that federal funding was utilized for the park. And I know there's been cases in Connecticut where it's been found that there has to be remained open to Connecticut. So I just want to confirm, I'm assuming that was part of the consideration.
Yes, Mr. Mauer, that, that is definitely part of the consideration. In fact, I was very cautious when drafting my directive and consulted with Attorney Lido in that regard. Throughout the COVID pandemic, we have not restricted access to the park, to utilize the park in any way. We have simply restricted the parking that we have available to residents and taxpayers. So people are free to come and utilize our park. The question that you asked is one that I had actually asked Attorney Lido to look into. It's actually something that prior to town attorney, on his list, but was not something he was able to get to before his untimely passing. Attorney Lido was going to look into this matter more, actually, on a more general basis, because it's an issue that's come up before relative to, well, what parts of the park does it apply to? Is it the entire park? Is it just certain facilities within the park? So that is something that I do want research for future seasons. But at this point in time, I feel that, you know, this is, this is the most appropriate way to proceed.
I, I agree, and I just wanted to get that on the public record, because I know that is a question that has been asked through social media, as well as I've had a couple of people reach out to ask me about. So I wanted to just make sure that that was on the record. My other question is about the actual website with the purchasing of these slots. Is it, is it clearly delineated within that website, clearly marked within that website, so that non-residents who are buying know that the parking is presently restricted to only residents?
Yes, I know Missy's, I think, trying to unmute herself right now. That is going to be very, very prominent, along with all the other rules for the season, but it's going to be very clearly, a very clear disclaimer on there. Missy, are you trying to?
Yeah, if I could chime in, our website, It's associated with my rec software, which our department's been using for many years. And what we did, and Ken will have the final look at it, we set it up as, there's a collision, that you have to pay. If there are obstacles, that you'll be showing a window, get them in, it'll say, you know, that too. So as you're driving in, when you have to come to the park, people will know that ahead of time, that they have to find alternative parking, or to get a ride from a Monroe friend to come to the pool.
I think I was able to pick up most of that. So it sounds like that was a confirmation that, yes, it will be clearly stated as people are purchasing it. And that's just something that's important from a legal perspective, that they, they know that ahead of time. So that's great to hear, that that's already being considered. Thank you, guys, so much for your hard work on this. I know this was something that was important to a lot of the community, to make sure that this was available for the summer. So thank you for your hard work.
Thank you, Mr. Mauer. Mr. Rooney, any questions or discussion?
No, Madam Chair, all set. Thank you.
Madam Chairman, DeeDee Martin, I have a question.
I'll do it right after Jonathan, because I just called his name.
Jonathan Formicella, no comments or questions.
Okay, so DeeDee Martin?
I just had a quick question for Missy. In the past, with our memberships and everything, we've had a situation where residents paid a different rate than non-residents. Now, the daily rate, will that be the same for residents and non-residents?
At this time, this is, these are the rates that I presented to the commission-based discussions with Mike Brown and Captain White, who helped me with this. So right now, it's, it's what is presented.
Okay, so the, just to be clear, the rate is the same for resident and non-resident?
Yes, you know, if I, first of all, can.
Yes, that was.
Missy, your connection is really unstable. It's kind of, half the time, we can't hear you. So that's, that's why they're probably, oh, she paused. Maybe she's going to try downloading. I can answer, yeah. One of the issues that comes up is one of practicality and logistics as well. You know, to go up with a different rate structure would involve some kind of proof required, which is going to dramatically impact the ability to get people in and out of the pool. And we have a half-hour window to get people out and in and do cleaning. And part of the issue is trying to make this, again, for this unusual season, as streamlined and as simple as we can.
Okay, thank you. I appreciate that.
You're welcome.
On to Tony Scott?
Tony Scott, all my questions that I had written down were all been asked and answered, so I appreciate that. So nothing further for me.
Thank you. Sean O'Rourke?
Sean O'Rourke, no further questions or comments.
Kevin Reed?
Kevin Reed, nothing more.
And Enid Lappelis, nothing more. So let's do the further discussion one more time, just in case, because, you know, it's not as though we're sitting in a meeting where you can just raise your hand. DeeDee Martin, any questions, discussion?
Nothing further, DeeDee Martin.
Jen Aguilar?
Jen Aguilar, nothing further.
Jason Mauer?
Jason Mauer, no further discussion or questions.
Terry Rooney?
Terry Rooney, no, Madam Chair.
Jonathan Formicella?
Jonathan Formicella, no discussion.
Tony Scott?
Tony Scott, no further discussion.
John O'Rourke?
John O'Rourke, no further discussion.
Kevin Reed?
Kevin Reed, no further discussion.
And myself, Enid Lappelis, no further discussion. We'll do a roll call vote on this resolution. DeeDee Martin?
DeeDee Martin, I vote aye.
Jen Aguilar?
Jen Aguilar, aye.
Jason Mauer?
Jason Mauer, aye.
Terry Rooney?
Terry Rooney, aye.
Jonathan Formicella?
Jonathan Formicella, aye.
Tony Scott?
Tony Scott, aye.
John O'Rourke?
John O'Rourke, aye.
Kevin Reed?
Kevin Reed, aye.
And Enid Lappelis, aye. So this motion passes by a vote of nine to zero. On to item C, resolution 20-59. To consider an act upon a resolution regarding the proposed human resources director job description. I'll ask Mr. O'Rourke to introduce the motion.
Resolution number 20-59, resolved that the proposed job description for a human resources director is hereby approved and replaces the former human resources director slash risk manager job description.
Do I have a second for this motion?
Terry Rooney, second.
Thank you. All right, so Mr. Kellogg, the discussion?
Thank you, Madam Chair. So as you're all aware, earlier this year, I appointed Mike Brown for this this evening as an interim director of human resources. One of his responsibilities was to assess the HR function, provide me with recommendations. One of the components of that effort was to actually look at the job description of the director position itself. Obviously, as you know, for this type of position, I make recommendations that are subject to your final approval for these, for these job descriptions. And Mr. Brown came back and provided me with some recommendations, which we've gone through, and we've refined a bit more. But I think the overarching change in, other than housekeeping matters and formatting, and, and those types of cleanups are really just to. and those types of cleanups, are really just to clearly depict a position that is both in assisting me and also assisting all of the department heads and staff in general in terms of moving the organization forward and more in line with my expectations of that role versus a prior job description, which I would refer to more as a collection of tasks. So with that, because the changes were so significant, we did not do a red line. I provided you both the current and the proposed new job description. So with that, I don't know if Mike Brown has anything he'd like to add at this point. And then, as you've been doing, Madam Chair, we can certainly answer any questions when you do your, when you go through the.
Right, the discussion.
I'll ask, with your permission, ask Mike Brown if you'd like to add anything at this point.
Thank you. Mr. Brown?
Yep, this is Mike Brown. Nothing new to add, I think Ken summarized it well.
Okay, so let's get to the discussion. I think that and the questions together is working well. So Dee Martin, any questions or discussion on the item?
Dee Martin, no questions.
Jen Aguilar?
Jen Aguilar, no questions, just a comment on, that's a great job on a job description. Thank you.
Jason Mauer?
Jason Mauer, I agree, this is a big improvement on the description. So thank you for your hard work on this.
Terry Rooney?
Terry Rooney, no discussion.
John Formicella?
Jonathan Formicella, no discussion.
Tony Scott?
Tony Scott, no discussion.
Sean O'Rourke?
Sean O'Rourke, no discussion.
Kevin Reed?
Kevin Reed, no discussion.
And Ena DePellis, no discussion. So we'll do one more further discussion, just in case there's a question or something. Dee Martin?
Nothing further, Dee Martin.
Jen Aguilar?
Jen Aguilar, nothing further.
Jason Mauer?
Jason Mauer, nothing further.
Terry Rooney?
Terry Rooney, nothing further.
John Formicella?
Jonathan Formicella, nothing further.
Tony Scott?
Tony Scott, nothing further.
Sean O'Rourke?
Sean O'Rourke, nothing further.
Kevin Reed?
Kevin Reed, nothing further.
And Ena DePellis, nothing further. So now we'll do a roll call vote on the resolution. Dee Martin?
Dee Martin, aye.
Jen Aguilar?
Jen Aguilar, aye.
Jason Mauer?
Jason Mauer, aye.
Terry Rooney?
Terry Rooney, aye.
John Formicella?
Jonathan Formicella, aye.
Tony Scott?
Tony Scott, aye.
Kevin, oh, sorry, Sean O'Rourke?
Sean O'Rourke, aye.
Kevin Reed?
Kevin Reed, aye.
And Ena DePellis, aye. So this motion passes by a vote of nine to zero. Going on, item B, Resolution 20-59, to consider an act upon a resolution regarding the WMR fiscal year 2021 proposed budget. Please introduce the motion.
Sean O'Rourke, Resolution number 20-60, resolve that FY 2021 proposed budget for WMNR is hereby approved as presented.
I need a second for the motion.
Jason Mauer, second.
Okay. So let's do the, Mr. Kellogg, the discussion?
Thank you, Madam Chair. So as I think all of you are well aware, the WMNR budget comes before both you and the Board of Finance each year as a separate matter, since it is a, it's a kind of a self-sustaining fund. The Board of Fin, I know in my original memo to you, I was referring it to you in anticipation of the Board's approval that had not occurred at the time of my writing that memo. I just want to confirm that the Board of Finance did, in fact, approve this budget at their last meeting. With that, I believe Kurt Anderson is on the call. And with the Chair's permission, I would simply like to have him speak to his budget. And then, as we said earlier, he can certainly address the questions you may have during discussion.
Okay, certainly. Mr. Anderson, are you there?
This is Kurt Anderson. Thank you all for your time in reviewing this budget. Again, we're a special revenue fund, so we don't use a penny of tax dollars. In fact, we actually give the town $37,000 to handle HR and finance, cutting checks for us. We're very fortunate. Normally, each year, we get about $84,000 from the corporation for public broadcasting. That's out of a $400 million that public radio and TV get from the government. The first, the CARES Act had 75 million set aside for public radio and TV. And we ended up getting a very generous, they were generous as the language of the Act required to smaller stations. So WMNR got a $75,000 check. Stations that were six or $60 million also got only a $75,000 check. It really helped us out. It's why we're going to have a little bit of a surplus, excess revenue over expenditures for this year. So not only do we raise our own funds, we actually have, as you'll see on the bottom of page two of the actual line item budgets, the cash balance for our accounts. That's cash that we've raised, that we haven't spent, that we get to use throughout the year. And so even, we even have our own rainy day fund, or whatever you guys call yours. So I'll just speak to the second to the last paragraph. The tower at Stepney, we did spend about $65,000 two years ago replacing 30-year-old guy wires. And now it's been two years, we want to check their tension. We won't have to do that again for another 30 years. We are going to have the tower painted at a cost of a little over $5,000, actually. We do that every five years. And so some of the, you might say deficit or excess expenditures over revenue that I'm projecting for next year will include about $11,000 for these long-term interest issues. Of course, right now, we're in good shape as of June 30th. I have no, we've had some good fundraising this spring. I don't know what our fall fundraiser will be like in October, early October. And I'm just saying this to finance and the WMNR Commission. We need to submit a revised budget because it doesn't look like we're going to raise the money we do. You'll see us back again. In my 38 years, we've presented revised budgets twice, once after 2008 and another time about 10 years earlier. I don't know if we'll have to do it again or not, but WMNR is self-sufficient. If it doesn't look like we're going to make our numbers, we will adjust.
Thank you, Mr. Anderson. So let's do the questions and discussions. Dee Martin?
Dee Martin, no questions, no discussion.
Jennifer Aguilar?
Jennifer Aguilar, no questions, no discussion.
Jason Mauer?
Jason Mauer, no questions, no discussion.
Terry Rooney?
Terry Rooney, nothing further.
Jonathan Formicella?
Jonathan Formicella, no discussion.
Tony Scott?
Tony Scott, no discussion.
Sean O'Rourke?
Sean O'Rourke, no discussion.
Kevin Reed?
Kevin Reed had to leave the meeting.
Okay, Kevin, Dee, and Ena DePellis, no discussion. So just in case there is a question or discussion, we'll go down the list one more time. Dee Martin?
No questions, Dee Martin.
Jen Aguilar?
Jen Aguilar, no question.
Jason Mauer?
Jason Mauer, nothing further.
Terry Rooney?
Terry Rooney, nothing further.
John Formicella?
Jonathan Formicella, nothing further.
John, Tony Scott?
Tony Scott, nothing further.
Sean O'Rourke?
Sean O'Rourke, nothing further.
And as long as Carol knows that Mr. Reed left at roughly, oh, you're there, okay.
I haven't left, no.
Okay, so any questions or discussion?
Nope.
Okay, and Ena DePellis, no questions or discussion. So we'll do a roll call vote on the resolution. Dee Martin?
Dee Martin, aye on the resolution.
Jen Aguilar?
Jen Aguilar, aye.
Jason Mauer?
Jason Mauer, aye.
Terry Rooney?
Terry Rooney, aye.
Jonathan Formicella?
Jonathan Formicella, aye.
Tony Scott?
Tony Scott, aye.
Sean O'Rourke?
Sean O'Rourke, aye.
It's Kevin Reed, aye.
And Ena DePellis, aye. So the motion passes by a vote of nine to zero. Item E, Resolution 20-61, consider an act upon a resolution regarding First Amendment to MOA between the Town of Monroe, DOE, for the Joint Finance Administration. I'll ask Mr. O'Rourke to introduce the motion.
Resolution number 20-61, resolve that KFMC first selectman of the Town of Monroe is authorized to execute and deliver on behalf of the Town of Monroe the First Amendment to the memorandum of agreement and any associated documents filed between the Monroe Board of Education for the Joint Finance Administration.
Do I have a second for this motion?
Jonathan Formicella, second.
Okay, Jonathan Formicella. And it's going on. Mr. Kellogg, discussion, please.
Thank you. Ken Kellogg speaking. So you'll all recall earlier this year that we entered into this MOA with the Board of Ed to essentially share services of the Finance Director, Ron Benofsky, among the Town and the Board of Ed. At that time, that MOA contemplated coming up with an evaluation and a, in good faith, coming up with a proposal for a permanent, if we felt it was appropriate, by the end of this fiscal year. I was actually just a little bit into the next fiscal year, it was July 3rd. To put it lightly, the ability to practically assess this has been impractical, to put it mildly, in the midst of COVID. So there's been very little, if any, time for Ron or Joe or I to deliberate or do any kind of due diligence, really for Ron to dig into a lot of analysis that would be necessary. So the proposal is to extend this so that the determinate date would be January 15th of 2021. I discussed it with Acting Superintendent of Schools, Joe Cobza, who has, who feels that is also in the best interest of the Monroe school system to do this, to continue this. I spoke to the Board of Education, she was comfortable presenting the Board of Education. I also spoke with Ron Benofsky to ensure that he was comfortable with the kind of agreement further, and he was. In fact, he is at the Board of Ed meeting right now, which is why he's not on this meeting. So that said, I would ask this council approve this amendment so that we can continue to provide the Board of Ed these services. My understanding is that the Board of Ed will be deliberating on this during their meeting as well, which.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Kellogg.
Whoever has dogs in the background, please mute yourself.
Questions, questions or discussion? Mrs. Martin, questions, discussion? So, so let's. Yeah, so Mrs. Martin, questions, discussion?
Yes, I have a question for Mr. Kellogg, Dee Martin here. Can, this is going to run right into, with the January cutoff, going to run right into budget preparations for both entities. Do you see that as a problem as we move forward?
I see it appropriate that as we conduct the evaluation, I would anticipate that any recommendation would make sense to have that information as you prepare the following fiscal year budget. So I think the timing actually works in concert with preparation.
I understand. Okay, thank you. Thank you, Mrs. Martin. Jen Aguilar?
Jen Aguilar, I have a couple of questions. Mr. Kellogg, I actually, I guess I just have a concern, not a question. My concern is not the time that's put into this job and the, nor the magnitude of the job. And I know, Miss, you've said Mr. Benofsky is comfortable doing the job. I'm concerned that we don't even get a chance to ask Mr. Benofsky that we're going to vote on this, and we don't get a chance to ask Mr. Benofsky his opinion or anything about it because he's at another meeting. And I guess that's my concern, is that he's at the Board of Ed meeting now, so the Town Council can't ask him anything in person. So it's kind of that splitting in two that I'm concerned about. I think Mr. Benofsky has done a phenomenal job, I will preface everything I just said, with the budget so far, and I am not against this at all. I would just like to be able to ask him questions about it. Thank you.
Jason Mauer, questions, discussion?
Jason Mauer, yes, I share some of the concerns that were just mentioned by Councilwoman Aguilar. That being said, I do want to point out that this extension is the only part of the amendment and that this agreement can be terminated by either party, either on our side or the Board of Education, within 30 days' notice. What I would ask is, I agree, we need to vote on this tonight because we're going to run time before the next meeting. And because of that, I am, because of that clause, I am comfortable doing so. But I would ask if we could have at the next meeting or the following meeting, both the Finance Director as well as Superintendent Cobza present, just so that we can get their take on this and what the process has been so far. That would be helpful, just to be able to have that as an item on the agenda in one of our coming meetings. But like I said, considering the fact that that part of the contract remains, and if at any point we do feel, from any side, whether it's coming from the selectmen, from the superintendent, from the Board of Education, or from the Finance Director, that this isn't working and that we need to stop it, that we can make that adjustment just on our side without having, even though we've extended the contract, I'm comfortable moving forward.
But I had mentioned to the council that there's only one, let's say, regular Town Council meeting in July. And as Mr. Kellogg mentioned, we're going to have a special meeting in a week or so after, you know, when I discuss the dates. But really, there's one in July, there's one in August. And so we'll see if, you know, I understood you saying this, Mr. Mauer, we'll see if Mr. Kellogg is following the date. And I'll make sure that Kat Senko, the Minister Assistant, tells us the date. I have it written down someplace, but I'm not at a convenient spot. So just keep that in mind as council members.
Certainly.
Terry Rooney, discussion, question?
No discussion, Madam Chair, thank you.
Jonathan Formicella?
Jonathan Formicella, no discussion.
Tony Scott?
Yeah, this is Tony Scott. Yeah, the only concern I have, and I agree with Councilwoman Aguilar, I would love to have them here to be able to ask them a couple of questions. I do worry about burnout, I'll be honest. You know, I can't imagine the five months that our Finance Director had to go through, now low on our budget and the craziness of COVID, but also the Board of Ed budgets, and worrying about having to deal with that another six to seven months. I do worry about that. He's a very valuable piece to the puzzle, I'm sure, and your team, Mr. Kellogg. And I do just worry about that. So I would love to, they'll have a conversation with them about it, but I understand and I agree with Councilman Mauer that this is something that we have to move forward with. And yeah, so that's all I have.
Sean O'Rourke?
No further discussion, Sean O'Rourke.
Kevin Reed?
Kevin Reed, no discussion.
Enid Lappelis, no discussion. So again, just in case someone has a question or a discussion, comment. DeeDee Martin?
Um, my only, DeeDee Martin, my only comment would be, as Mr. Scott had indicated, this is a tremendous pressure situation for Mr. Bonavage, and I do look forward to talking to him about it.
Okay, so we'll, we'll make sure that gets done. Jennifer Aguilar?
Jennifer Aguilar, no further discussion.
And Jason Mauer?
Jason Mauer, just because, just to get a confirmation from the selectmen, so if you can try to arrange with both Superintendent Cobza as well as Finance Director Bonavsky to be at one of the next two meetings. I think that would alleviate a lot of the concern, but I, as I stated, I'm still comfortable moving forward tonight.
Thank you. Jason, that's Jason. Terry Rooney?
Madam Chair, before you go on, could you give the First Selectman a chance to confirm that, that is all right?
Mr. Kellogg?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I was going to jump in earlier, but I didn't want to interrupt the, the discussion, so. So I just want to, I'll just preface my comments with the fact that if I had not gotten assurances from Superintendent Cobza and Finance Director Bonavsky that they were in any way, shape, or form uncomfortable with this arrangement, or felt that they were unable to perform the duties, or if it would be detrimental to them, the town, the Board of Ed, I certainly would not have presented this extension to you. That said, I have certainly no problem whatsoever. If the Chair wants to have this as an agenda item for discussion next meeting, I certainly would invite Mr. Bonavsky to join us and discuss further. I mean, certainly, the last several months have been trying for all of us in terms of workload, but I would no way, I would in no way characterize them as indicative of what position would normally entail, because we've been, none of our positions have been quote unquote "normal" in the past few months. So it's, to, to equate what we've been going through the last three months is, is just not, it's not a good benchmark. But that said, I'd be more than happy to have Mr. Bonavsky, and I would, I would certainly be happy to invite the Superintendent on the Chair's behalf as well to a future meeting, so you can hear it directly from him. Thank you very much.
All right, Terry, I believe I'm up to Terry Rooney. Any further questions or discussion?
No, nothing further, Madam Chair, thank you.
Jonathan Formicella?
Jonathan Formicella, no further discussion.
Tony Scott?
Tony Scott, no further discussion.
Sean O'Rourke?
Sean O'Rourke, no further discussion.
Kevin Reed?
Kevin Reed, no further discussion.
And Enid Lappelis, no further discussion. So now we have the roll call vote on the resolution. DeeDee Martin?
DeeDee Martin, aye.
Jen Aguilar?
Jen Aguilar, aye.
Jason Mauer?
Jason Mauer, aye.
Terry Rooney?
Terry Rooney, aye.
Jonathan Formicella?
Jonathan Formicella, aye.
Tony Scott?
Tony Scott, aye.
Don O'Rourke?
Don O'Rourke, aye.
Kevin Reed?
Kevin Reed, aye.
And Enid Lappelis, aye. So this motion passes nine to zero. Item, resolution 20-62, to consider an act upon a resolution regarding employment agreement for the Chief of Police. Mr. O'Rourke, would you introduce the motion, please?
Sean O'Rourke, resolution number 20-62, resolve that Kenneth M. Kellogg, First Selectman of the Town of Monroe, is authorized to execute and deliver on behalf of the Town of Monroe the employment agreement for the Chief of Police and any associated documents by and between John Salvatore regarding such employment.
I have a second for this motion.
Jen Aguilar, second.
Okay. Mr. Kellogg, discussion, please.
Thank you, Ken Kellogg, for selectmen speaking. So as you'll, as you have the information from my memo, the Board of Police Commissioners have been negotiating an employment agreement with Chief Salvatore to be effective January, I'm sorry, July 1st of 2020. Town Attorney Frank Lido has been working diligently with the Board of Police Commission and the Chief in that regard. His letter is included in your packet. The Board of Police Commission did approve this agreement at their June 17th meeting. Per statute, the Board of Police Commission has the sole authority over the appointment of the Police Chief. However, as you know, our charter does require that contracts come before this body as well, which is why it is before this evening. And that said, I mean, certainly, if you have any questions in that regard, Mike Brown is still on the line, as well as Attorney Lido.
Okay, so any questions or discussion? DeeDee Martin?
DeeDee Martin here. I have, I have two questions. One, couldn't you tell us the, what the vote was on the Police Commission? And number two, I see in performance goals for the Chief's position, it says, "The commission with input from the First Selectman and the Chief shall establish blah, blah, blah." The input from the First Selectman, is that something new in this contract, from prior contracts?
I, I can probably answer it if you, I didn't hear the question. Miss Martin?
Oh, well, the first one, I don't know whether you can answer or not, Mr. Lido, was the vote on the commission. But my second question was in number six, performance goals, it mentions input from the First Selectman. Is that an addition to the contract as opposed to prior contracts?
I, I believe the vote was unanimous, but I'll let the First Selectman correct me if I'm wrong on that. Secondarily, that is not a new provision in that, in the agreement, the performance goals and the review by the First Selectman, that was in the prior contract.
Okay, that's all I wanted to know. Thank you, Mr. Lido.
And, here, this is.
Yep, go ahead, Mr. Kellogg.
First Selectman Kellogg speaking. While you were having that discussion, I pulled up the voting record for the June 17th meeting. The motion to accept the Chief's employment agreement was made by Commissioner Valani, seconded by Commissioner Deek, and passed five to zero.
All right, thank you very much. Appreciate that.
You're welcome.
Jen Aguilar?
Jen Aguilar, no questions or discussion.
Jason Mauer?
Jason Mauer, no further questions or discussion.
Terry Rooney?
Terry Rooney, no further questions or discussion.
Jonathan Formicella?
Jonathan Formicella, no discussion.
Tony Scott?
Tony Scott, no discussion.
Sean O'Rourke?
Sean O'Rourke, no, no further discussion.
Kevin Reed?
Kevin Reed, no discussion.
And Enid Lappelis, no discussion. So one more time, just in case something popped into your brain. DeeDee Martin, any question, discussion?
DeeDee Martin, there's nothing in my brain, no discussion.
Make sure that goes on the record, Carol. Jen Aguilar?
Jen Aguilar, nothing further.
Jason Mauer?
Jason Mauer, nothing further.
Terry Rooney?
Terry Rooney, nothing further.
Jonathan Formicella?
Jonathan Formicella, nothing further.
Tony Scott?
Tony Scott, nothing further.
Don O'Rourke?
Don O'Rourke, no further discussion.
Kevin Reed?
Kevin Reed, no further discussion.
And Enid Lappelis, no further discussion. So we'll do a roll call vote on this resolution. DeeDee Martin?
DeeDee Martin, aye.
Jen Aguilar?
Jen Aguilar, aye.
Jason Mauer?
Jason Mauer, aye.
Rooney?
Terry Rooney, aye.
Jonathan Formicella?
Jonathan Formicella, aye.
Tony Scott?
Tony Scott, aye.
Sean O'Rourke?
Sean O'Rourke, aye.
Kevin Reed?
Kevin Reed, aye.
Enid Lappelis? Aye. So this passes by a vote of nine to zero. And I, do we have to ask for public participation since there was nobody the first time around, Mr. Kellogg?
Yes, I would, I would strongly encourage you to do that.
Okay. So are there any individuals who wish to participate in the second public participation? So Frank Lido, now that you're back, Mr. Moderator, can you just see if there's any members of the public who wish to participate, please?
Why, sure, Madam Chairman, I'd be happy to do that. Are there any members of the public that wish to participate in the second public participation session? Last call. Hearing non, Madam Chair, I believe you can move on at your discretion.
I'm going to declare this meeting adjourned at 9:24 PM, and I will.
Motion to adjourn.